The meeting will come to order. The time is now 5:30 on Monday, August 16th, 2021. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I will now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer present. Stacy Banks.
Present.
Cora Masses Berry.
Here.
Maggie Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Juanice Floyd. Rhona Wolf-Friedman.
Here.
Alma Gates.
Present.
Natalie Hopkinson. Kimber Minkity. Mary Ann Miller. Mariah Hall Rooney. Cece.
Present.
Carla Sims.
Present.
Oh, good, great. Hector Torres.
Present.
Jose Alberto Yucut. Gretchen Warden.
Present.
Derek Younger.
Present.
And Reggie Van Lee. So, looks like we have more than a quorum, so that's good. So we'll proceed. A quorum is present. This is a meeting in the public body held an open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, D.C. Law 18-350, D.C. Official Code 2-571-2-580. The meeting is being conducted remotely using the Cisco Webex Virtual Meeting Platform and is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and differences. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Kachak and the Piscataway people. We pay respects to the elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. And later I'll talk about how we want to adopt this same sentiment in a truth and reconciliation stance for this commission. We'll talk about that later. The agenda for this meeting was previously circulated. Is there any objection to the agenda? Here, no objection. The agenda stands as adopted. Next is the approval of the July 19th, 2021 meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Here, no corrections. The minutes stand as approved. I think we now move to the public comment period. We have several guests joining us today for the public comment period. It's my understanding they wish to address a proposed project which may or may not have been submitted as part of an application to an FY22 grant program. I say may or may not have been submitted because while it is publicly known that the proposed project in question did engage in various community outreach activities required by the application, we do not disclose if any application was in fact completed and submitted for consideration in accordance with the anonymity of our grant-making process. And each year, there are literally dozens of applications across all grant programs that have begun but not submitted or incomplete. As second point, I want to emphasize to both our guests and the commissioners, this is not a public hearing on a grant. In fact, it would be inappropriate for this body to hold public hearings on its grants programs because to do so would overstep our boundaries as a grant maker. The work of engaging the community and garnering support for a proposed project is the responsibility of the applicant. It's their project, not ours. Furthermore, this agency awards over 600 grants each year to hold public hearings. For each would be impossible. Because this is not a hearing, commissioners will not ask questions or otherwise engage in dialogue with our guests. We, of course, welcome feedback from all constituents. We will listen and discuss amongst ourselves if and when it is appropriate and warranted to do so. I wanted to make that clarification. And now, I'll turn the agenda to our, our public comments. I think first we have Frasier Walton. Is Frasier Walton here?
Frasier Walton is here. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Please, we're anxious to hear from you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, panel members and Mr. Chairman. My name is Frasier Walton, and I represent the Kingman Park Civic Association. Over the last 83 years, the association has fought to preserve Kingman Park and the Anacostia Real as a historic African-American community. We are here today to strongly oppose the grant applications submitted by Wayside Studio Artists and a new group called, quote, Friends of Kingman Park, unquote. The grant application is a submission of architectural plans and drawings. The plans are not artwork entailed by Wayside. The plans include metal bleachers, metal structures that did not fit in our small valuable green space triangle that we have fought to preserve for many years. Over the last four years, the Friends organization, which is the applicant, opposed the designation of Kingman Park as a historic African-American neighborhood. And they had a few black supporters. But the vast majority of Washington, D.C.-area African-Americans supported our nomination and application for a historic district, and we pervaded. We are now on the National Register of Historic Places and the local D.C. Inventory of Historic Places. Black lives do that. Wayside Friends' grant application is incomplete and does not comply with the laws and regulations of the District of Columbia. The applicant has failed to submit drawings and plans from a licensed D.C. architect. The D.C. Historic Preservation Review Board noted this deficiency, but somehow approved the art, which we maintain is not art, but architecture. The commission has the expertise, this commission has the expertise, to define art and bleachers and walls and metal posts that the applicants maintain are art. We maintain that it is pure architectural designs, not art. These same structures are located at the RFK Stadium Fields directly across the street from the Kingman Park Triangle. These very same metal structures that they would like to put in a very small triangle that is the entrance to Kingman Park that has been maintained for over 83 years. And lastly, the drawings are unacceptable to the neighborhood, to our supporters who have fought to preserve this location within the community. KPCA will submit an appropriate historic marker designed for our longtime green space interest to the community. It is merely the actions of the applicant is merely an attempt to obtain taxpayer dollars, destroys the appearance of our historic community, and disrespects the location of St. Benedict the Moore Roman Catholic Church, which sits directly across the street. Thank you again on behalf of the Kingman Park Civic Association.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walton. Now we hear from Veronica Ragland. Is Ms. Ragland here? Is Ms. Ragland here?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Van Lee and other members of the D.C. Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Veronica Ragland. I grew up and presently live in Kingman Park. I believe that the Wayside Studio and the Friends of Kingman Park are not qualified to apply for grant monies for the proposed changes to the small green space in the Kingman Park Triangle for the following reasons. Number one, the grant application for this project is inappropriate, a waste of taxpayer dollars, and unjustified in light of Kingman Park's historic district designation on the local and national level. Number two, from the very beginning, Friends of Kingman Park was vehemently against the Kingman Park Civic Association's historic district application, which was approved by the D.C. Historic Preservation Review Board with a vote of six to one in 2018 and six to zero for the expansion in 2019. Neither Friends of Kingman Park nor Wayside Studios contacted the Kingman Park Civic Association regarding any proposal or what would be historically representative of the Kingman Park community. Therefore, the only thing Friends of Kingman Park and Wayside Studios are interested in is obtaining grant monies and destroying a historic African-American designation with inappropriate architectural structures. Proposed artwork submitted in inappropriate, is inappropriate for this small green space because it is historically incorrect. Kingman Park was developed in 1928 and is not a part of the historic slave period as depicted by Wayside Studios. Further, the proposed bleacher project for meetings is a duplication of RFK bleachers across the street on Oklahoma Avenue that is available to the community. Number six, KPCA has repeatedly advised the officer planning and the HPRB that the Kingman Park Civic Association wants to put the appropriate signage like the U.S. National Park Service to identify this African-American historic district. Number seven, additionally, FOKP and Wayside Studios are not architects. And at the last D.C. Historic Preservation and Review Board meeting, the environmental issues of water runoff and the need for the D.C.-licensed landscape architect to study the environmental impact that this project on the Kingman Park community in the overdevelopment of this small green space was raised. In conclusion, the Kings of Friends of Park, Friends of Kingman Park and Wayside Studios' application should be rejected and disqualified for its lack of professional licensing and lack of appropriate approval representation for the African-American community. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ragland. Judy Watson?
Yes. Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share. Sankofa, Kingman Park Triangle. The sankofa represents the need to reflect on and consider the past in order to build a successful future. The sankofa is a symbol of the Adinkwa tribe in Ghana, is usually represented as a bird with his head turned full circle backward. This bird's head's position represents symbolically that one has to remember, reflect, know the past while in the present, to know the future, to learn, to remember, and in some cases, not to repeat. In this time and era, we are witnessing the social, psychological, and environmental impact when others try to counsel, wipe out the historical events, the historical memories, and to change the physical environment. This plot of land, Kingman Triangle Park, is part of the Kingman Park community, along with the 75-year-old St. Benedict the Moore Catholic Church, named after a North African Moore priest. This is part of the past that the sankofa is looking at, the plot of land, the church, and once the school. This plot of land, the church, are part of Kingman Park's historical past. It is tied to the Kingman Park community's ancestral history. How can we, the sankofa bird, look to the past when we have present-day petitioners wanting to erase and to eliminate this community's past? They are seeking to deny, to counsel, to change, and to redesign the Kingman Park's social and environmental history into their, the petitioners', future history. From their cultural, social perspective, there exists no historical past, only their future history. Their future will have plans that have no connection to the past. These last two or three years in this U.S. country has shown the psychological, social, emotional toll that has been taken and inflicted on a group of people when their neighborhoods and their communities and community has been counseled, has been redesigned, has been redeveloped into images not connected to the past and not connected to them. The sankofa says no to the disconnection. The sankofa says, remember the past. The sankofa says, connect to the past with the present into the future, so everyone remembers our history, our residents, our community, our neighborhoods' past, present, and future. Sankofa says no to the hack, hacket, Wayside proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Carol West?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Carol West. My family attended St. Benedict the Moore for over 20 years until we moved to Maryland in the early 80s. St. Benedict the Moore was an Italian-born Francis Prior, and he was born in the 1500s in Sicily. His parents was African slaves. He was free at birth, and he was declared a patriot saint of American of Black African descent. In the USA, there are seven historically Roman Catholic parishes that bear his name as of today. My family received our holy communion and confirmation at St. Benedict the Moore, as well as exceptional education from arithmetic to English to French and Latin, provided us the foundation to further our careers. It is with great sadness, and I am stunned to learn the proposed usage of this beautiful lane right in front of this church. The green space area has been a beautiful landscape since my childhood and contributed to the illustrates of nature in this urban environment. This church and the surrounding population has enveloped such rich historical memories to the Black community. The proposed presence of these bleachers that you want to occupy will leave leftover trash for the church and the community to pick up. And eventually, the appearance of the negative elements that will bring and would drive enough of the waters and cause more trouble. The children and the staff at the church and the surrounding neighborhoods are entitled to an undisturbed environment and continue the bright future and to practice their religious beliefs, fully without such intrusion. That is why it is the utmost importance that this green space not be disturbed. I grew up in the community in the 60s and 70s, and I remember the priests and the nuns, they did their footwork. They, they came and visited us in our community to make sure that we was okay, to make sure that we have what we need. And today, their names are in my heart as I speak. I think it is a deliberate approach in our Black community beyond that is unfair and it is totally wrong. It is nothing new in our Black community, how they come and intrude in gentrification. Either they cut the water off, poison the water, cut our food supply, and now the place that we worship. My purpose is to sit here and to bring the awareness, because this is nothing new to us. I cannot understand with all of the buildings that are sitting in the District of Columbia right now that is sitting there to rot. Why can't we renovate some of those empty buildings for this purpose? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. West. So, so thank you, Mr. Walton. Thank you, Ms. Ragland, Dr. Walton, and Ms. West. And know that you have been heard very clearly by this commission. Do not be mistaken. You were heard loud and clearly. But as I said earlier, this is not a public hearing on a grant. Because this is not a public hearing, the commissioners are not allowed to ask questions or otherwise engage in dialogue with you as our guests. However, if any commissioner wants to discuss what was heard from the public comment period, that should be done under new business. And new business is further on our agenda, so when we get to the new business, there's an opportunity for commissioners to request that we have this, this discussion, and that discussion would have to be done in closed session. But again, I thank you for your comments and know that you've really been heard by us. I'm going to move on to the welcome. Was there a question? Good. I'll move on to the welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I think someone is going to help me with the slides and share some slides with me. I think that's your question. Good. What I wanted to do, as you would indulge me, is to share with some of you for the first time and a number of you, once again, what I'm describing as a collective agenda going forward. This is coming from my having had one-on-one sessions with each of the commissioners and several hours of conversations with the senior staff as well as others, so that we have an agenda for this commission going forward. And we would invite, in the appropriate way and the appropriate time, for people to comment on this, but I wanted to take advantage of my second meeting sharing to share this agenda with you. So why don't we go to the next slide? As I have said in my statements when I was sworn in and when I went through the approval process, there are three pillars to what I think the agenda should be for this commission going forward. The first is a notion of governance and the fact that even though we are quote-unquote independent of the mayor's office, there is a high interdependence that this commission has with the mayor's office, an interdependence with the city council, an interdependence amongst the commissioners themselves, an interdependence between the commissioners and the staff, and an independence between the staff themselves, and certainly to our community. So there are lots of connection points, and what we want to do is to embrace that interdependence in our government's governance structure going forward. Second, there's a strategic plan that has been completed in the May, in the June, July time period, and we want to really get on that plan. There are some key elements of the plan that I want to talk about. The first is the fact that we want to be forward-moving and forward-reaching. We want to make sure that we are not just here to give our grantees fish, but to teach them to fish, so that they can become independent, so that they can scale and grow, so that they can exist beyond the money that may come from the city. So that whole plan is rooted in the notion of how do we build capacity? How do we make sustainability happen in the organizations? And therefore, build the entire, what I'm describing as the arts and humanities ecosystem of the nation's capital. Also, we recognize that rightly or wrongly, some damage has been done to some people, some artists and arts organizations in the city. And so this notion of truth and reconciliation is really important to us. And so we want to move forward beyond what has been done, which we recognize as we recognize in the land acknowledgement, that harm was done, but we're moving forward. And then lastly, there was the task force in equity, inclusion, and belonging that I happen to have chaired, and a number of the commissioners and staff were a part of that task force. It came forth in January with 44 recommendations that the commission approved, and we want to move in hyperdrive in executing those recommendations. So those are the three pillars of the moving forward collective agenda that I wanted to talk about. The following pages go into some detail about those. Let's go to the next page, please. Around governance, fully recognizing interdependence, as I talked about before, we plan to enhance the bylaws to reflect that interdependence, to drive better camaraderie amongst the commissioners themselves. There's a board retreat being planned and encourage all commissioners to attend. There are a number of social events between the commissioners and the staff, two of which in particular that have already been scheduled, that we want to create so that we can create that better working relationship between the commissioners and the staff themselves. The committee's assignments, we're doing some slight reshuffling of those and allowing commissioners to volunteer to sit on a committee and then let that committee come together and select their chair, as opposed to I, as the chair of the commission, deciding who sits on what committees and who chairs those commissions, committees, rather. We want this democratic process of committee assignments. I have committed to quarterly one-on-ones between myself and each of the commissioners to make sure all voices and perspectives are heard, because some commissioners are quieter than others, some are louder than others, and I don't want to have anyone whose point of view or perspective is not heard. So if I don't get it in the meetings on these quarterly one-on-ones, I'll get a chance to hear that perspective. And then I'm happy to say that the Mayor's Arts Awards that used to be in our purview some time ago, and we moved in a different direction, we're now re-engaging with the Mayor's Arts Award. I will be presenting at the Mayor's Arts Awards, and there are some other activities being planned so that this commission moves yet closer to, connected to, and reflects the interdependence between the commission and the mayor, mayor's office. So these are some of these specific governance things we're starting with. This list will grow over time. This is what we started with initially. Let's go to the next page. On the strategic plan, to emphasize the commission as a leader, ensuring that all D.C. residents benefit fully from the transformative power of the arts and humanities. And this is a bold statement, but we really want to be a leader amongst the commissions across the country. This is the nation's capital. We have an opportunity here that others don't have in other parts of the country. So we really want to stand up strategically to this new challenge. What that means is, in the spirit of helping small organizations grow, to drive to sustainability, to scale, to allow them to learn how to fish and grow themselves, as opposed to just providing fish, more of our general operating funding opportunities will be directed towards the smaller organizations. And we talk about later in this meeting, the work of the Grant Committee, Gretchen Warden and others, you'll hear how we are beginning already to enact that mission. Facilitating ways to support beyond grants. We have artists who need housing. We have people that need space. We have people that need health insurance. And while we can't provide that directly, or perhaps can't provide that directly, we can facilitate connecting their needs to people that can provide those needs. So we want to go beyond just the dollars and cents and to help in other ways as well. We want to make sure that we are diversifying our panels, much more significantly. I had the pleasure of sitting on one panel, and I'm sitting on another one later. But it's clear that we have an opportunity to have more diversification in those panels. And we want to be intentional about that, not just to invite people, but to push that agenda much stronger. We think that it's important for us to not lose sight of why we're here. So starting in our October meeting, we will showcase in each meeting some grantee, an artist, an arts organization, a humanities organization, to remind us of why we're here. It's not just the business of looking at the financials and dealing with issues, but to appreciate and enjoy the art and humanities in this city. So we're going to bring those to each of our meetings as a reminder. As I said before, this notion of truth and reconciliation is quite important to us. We're going to develop a mantra around that that we will live by. That's going to take some wordsmithing and some time, but we are committed to coming with a statement we can all embrace and move forward in the spirit of truth and reconciliation. We want to create what I'm calling a creative economy working group. And this is to recognize that arts and humanities in our city and in our country really does drive the economy, that some people start off as artists and become great lawyers, doctors, Indian chiefs, et cetera. Other people become great artists, but the vitality of an economic environment can be driven by the creativity and innovation in that environment. And so we want to think about how can we, as a commission, encourage this participation in this creative economy? And lastly, there are many good things that this commission has done and many good things we plan to do. We've always, not always been as good at communicating, marketing, putting the PR around what we're doing, aggressively communicating it. So we're going to create an aggressive communications plan. We have a new staff member coming on board as well to help with that. So we want to tell our story better and change the narrative to a much more positive narrative. These are all the things we want to do in the context of the strategic plan. Next page. The task force recommendations. We have presented those earlier. There are 44 of those. Back in the January meeting, we went through those at some level in detail. December and January meeting, we went through some detail on that. We just need to get on with it. We need to make sure that we have adequately resourced what is necessary to drive the actions and timelines for those recommendations and aligning the staff bandwidth and capacity with that so that we can get it done. So no long speech on that, other than we did the hard work for six months. Now let's get on with it. Our next page. So we're shifting the paradigm. We need to get on with it. I look for everyone's engagement, involvement, not necessarily to just embrace this without having looked at it, but really to work with us to make sure that we move this forward in the right sort of way. If we need to make some adjustments, let's make the adjustments, but let's get on with it. So I thank you for allowing me to share that, and more of that will come forth as we begin to drive into implementation. We wanted to do that here. I think we're ready to move on to the reports and updates. I think we're starting with the Director's report. Jeff Scott, Chief of Staff.
Thank you. So Director Bron is out on leave right now, so I'll give you the report on her behalf. Just one thing as it pertains to the recent mayor's order and the COVID-19 vaccination requirement. As you know, on August 10th, Mayor Bowser issued a mayor's order requiring all district government employees, interns, contractors, and grantees to be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 vaccination or regular testing of district government employees, interns, contractors, and grantees. It's vital to help ensure the effective operation of the government and the safety of those it serves. This order is applicable only to agencies that are under the administrative control of the mayor, but independent agencies such as the commission are strongly encouraged within the order to adopt the same vaccination certification requirements. As that pertains to the grantee, according to the order, district government grantees would ensure that all of their employees that have any in-person contact with other persons as part of the work of the grant would either be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 or would undergo weekly testing for COVID-19 and only report for work when they had negative test results and wear masks while working. So because of the commission's role in formulating So because of the commission's role in formulating a program, grant-related policy, we wanted to bring this before the commission to request the commission to deliberate and decide on how you feel we should approach the handling of this vaccination requirement or this request for a vaccination requirement from the mayor's office as it pertains to our grantees, as it pertains to the staff. That's a decision that falls to the executive directors, the personnel authority for the staff. But in terms of the grantees and that relationship, that policy decision is false to the commission. So if y'all want to discuss it now or soon, so we have guidance for our grantees.
If I just may add something, in my own deliberation around this, I can certainly see the relevance of people who are interacting with others in a public space needing to be vaccinated or needing to take the test or needing to be masked. I get that. But it was a stretch for me to appreciate how a grantee working in a studio by themselves during their work would have to be vaccinated or anything in order to receive a grant from the commission. But again, this is a democracy, so it's not up to me to dismiss that which the mayor is doing or decide on behalf of the commission how we should interact. So I wanted to bring it to the commission for a conversation and discussion that we may not be able to finish today. We certainly can start today and think about how we want to proceed in this area. So do any of the commissioners have a point of view they want to offer?
I have a question, Reggie.
Yes, please.
Jeff, did you say it's only grantees who interact with others, not who are alone? Or did I mishear that?
No, that's correct. That's what the mayor's order states. It's the grantees, employees of grantees that have in-person contact with other persons as part of the work of the grant. If they're working by themselves as a grantee in a studio, it wouldn't apply.
Okay. Yeah, then I'm in favor. If they're interact, if they're interacting with others, then I'm in favor of vaccinations. But I just, I agree, Reggie, if they're alone, then I think that's not our purview.
Other reactions?
Mr. Venly, I agree with your, with your statement, absolutely. However, I think that the mayor's intent, and very favorably, would be that as many district residents or people who enjoy the benefits from the city have a healthy lifestyle, and therefore the vaccination is one way to encourage that. While I wouldn't want to force it on anyone, certainly I think it should be posted or presented as a recommendation of, you know, you know, how would you say? A very strong recommendation and not allow ourselves to ignore it for that purpose, because it is for the good of that artist as well. And we don't really know whether or not there is interaction, and people do invite as artists, you know, people into their studio. So it's just protection for them and the audience, because it could come back to haunt us if they're not.
Yep. And then certainly, while I really agree with you, to play devil's advocate just to some extent, in the spirit of applying an equity lens to this issue and recognizing rightly or wrongly, there are a number of minority communities where vaccinations are not prevailing in a significant way. And sometimes people have valid reasons, sometimes they don't have valid reasons, et cetera. So I would just hate for us in attempt to be helpful in the context of this health pandemic to thwart the creativity and the innovation of some artists. So I think carefully worded, as we've talked about so far, makes sense to me as long as we word it very carefully, and if we are willing to adjust under some sort of certain circumstance, extenuating circumstances, as opposed to a full, whole cloth approach. Again, I think I can abide by whatever we agree to as a group, but I just want to caution us that this doesn't become a slippery slope towards a back-end approach in equity.
Chairman Venly, I agree with the spirit of the mayor's directive and agree with you that we shouldn't force anything on anyone. But putting another equity lens on it, I recognize that, and Commissioner Barry would probably know this as well, is that everyone has access to adequate healthcare. So I guess the reverse of what you're saying I would be a proponent of as well, which is if there's a way that we can help, help people get access to vaccinations and to adequate healthcare where there isn't currently, I think that would be a great role for us to play as a commission and as a district entity, appointed entity. Thank you.
No, I agree. I agree.
My question was, how have they talked about what enforcement would be? Like, how do they, how do they enforce this? And is it like, sort of, if it turned into sort of like a punitive thing, then that's definitely heading for some sort of backlash. But Jeffrey, do you know how they?
So what it would be, there'd have to be, for existing grantees, there'd have to be change requests made to the grants or amendments made to the grant. It's ultimately something that the office of the city administrator, I think is going to work out in terms of the logistics and the technicality of what sort of enforcement mechanisms would be in place. We know what the enforcement mechanisms are in place on the staff side from HR, but the grantee contractor enforcement is going to be sorted out by OCA. And so we're just waiting to hear back on that.
Other comments?
What are the, I wanted to ask Jeff, please, what the staff requirements are?
So for the staff, it's the same.
And what happens if you do not get vaccinated?
So if you don't get vaccinated, you, you have that option not to get vaccinated, but you do have to test weekly for COVID-19 and test negative weekly for COVID-19. So that's your, if you don't want to get vaccinated or you can't for whatever reason. Failing to do that, however, DCHR has put out guidance that has several instances. I think it's a three-step process with the first iteration of if you're, this doesn't kick in until later in September, but if you miss that date, then you're given time to go get vaccinated or get tested. If you keep subsequently missing those dates, it could result in disciplinary actions ultimately for staff.
Jeff, could I jump in? And Reggie, would it be okay if I jump in and just add on to what Jeff just, Jeff shared? And I've got the order in front of me. In the order to Commissioner Hopkinson's question, the order, the mayor and her order doesn't, doesn't specifically say what specific adverse actions will be taken against employees who don't abide by the rules of this order. But it does say, the order does say broadly that, that any employees who are subject to this order and who fail to comply with it will be broadly speaking, subject to adverse employment action. So it's, it's a, it's a broad warning, but not a specific warning about what consequences will flow. And as Jeff mentioned, the way this, this, the protocol will work if you all decide to adopt it is either our, the, our employees either have to, in writing, make an, make a request for an exception to this general mandate of vaccination and arguing that to be vaccinated would violate a sincerely held religious belief or that there's some, or that there's some medical reason that's documented by their physician, explaining why taking the vaccination would compromise them medically, or the third option, you get tested weekly. The order, as I read, it doesn't provide, it doesn't speak to what adverse actions, if any, can or will be imposed on subcontractors, subcontractors if these rules are imposed on them and they fail to abide by them. But I think, I think the consequences would have to be meted out, decided on and meted out by the involved agency.
So if I may ask a question and then make a suggestion. The question is, am I hearing from the commissioners that if indeed we can word the language of this such that it is not punitive, such that it does not apply to an artist who may be in a closed space, working alone, and not interacting with people? If we can sort out the language and the protocols and the implications of this, the consequences in a way that makes sense to us. If all of that, all those ifs can be accommodated, then we don't have any objection in general to the notion of the spirit of the mayor's order? That's my question. Does anybody object? I feel otherwise. If not, my recommendation would be if I could get Jeff and Carl to go away and work through the language in a way that, and then we could bring a resolution to the commissioners. Can we wait a month until our September meeting, or is this something we need to act on sooner?
So as far as it relates to employees and interns, that takes back September nineteenth. For the grantees and contractor side of it, the, I don't think they assigned a date when that kicks into effect. So I don't know if that falls under the September nineteenth date, assuming, or for what exactly, so.
Well, since our next meeting is September, I think twenty-second or something, that's not too far off. And it's not as though we will be doing any additional grants beyond the ones we're already considering. So if it's okay, if this is not breaking any sort of rules, I would say let's go off and write the language. Let's bring it back. We can email it around in the meantime. And our September meeting, whatever resolution and the wording we're comfortable with, we can put through, we'll do then.
Mr. Chairman, I would just bring a point, you know, for a second. Religious or medical reasons as a reason not to be vaccinated are fine and acceptable. However, I think that we would still have the necessity for testing because that does not, you know, because you have a religious reason or a medical reason not to get vaccinated, doesn't necessarily mean that you cannot be the conveyor of an infection.
Right.
Has to be part of the language as well, that they still have to be subject to testing in order to have public access.
So Carl, can you find a way to reflect that in what you bring forward to us?
The answer is yes, but, but, but more foundationally, you all, the commissioners, you've got to decide what policy it is you want. And then Jeff and I can write it up. And what I mean by that is, is as Jeff mentioned, in the mayor's order, at the end of the mayor's order, it clearly says that independent agencies, you, this is not binding on you, but you, but we encourage you to adopt as much of this as possible. You all have to decide, are we going to adopt all of it? And we'll send out, we can resend out the mayor's order. You all have to decide, are you going to adopt all of the substance of the mayor's new order or part of it, and if part of it, which parts of it? So what I, what I will do after this meeting, the first thing in the morning, Jeff and I, we'll send back out the mayor's order. Maybe the best approach is for you all to take a look at it. But yeah, Jeff and I'll sit down and draft, grab something. But bottom line, ultimately, you all are going to have to decide whether or not you're going to adopt the whole order, part of the order, or none of it.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to oversimplify it, but as I listened to this conversation, the notion that we want to encourage people to be vaccinated, and that we do feel as though if you're interacting with others in any form or fashion, then you should be vaccinated. So whatever that means to part or all or whatever, because this is our own approach, right? Taking counsel from what the mayor said, that's our acceptance. So employees, staff, and office workers with others have to be vaccinated. Artists that are going to interact with other people have to be vaccinated. But to the extent the artist can say, I'm sequestered in my studio, doing this work myself, I'm not interacting with anybody, and/or I have a medical reason that makes sense, and/or we talked about disrespect this conversation. That's what we're saying. So it's not a matter of taking or not taking part of what the mayor said. It's creating our own view based on this conversation.
And I'll connect with Jeff in the morning, and we'll, we'll begin to draft up some in the morning.
And Reggie, I would tend to agree with what Hector said, because I think we need to be responsible for our fellow human beings to start with and to also support the mayor in this very important decision. And I know it's complicated, but we need to be a little clearer. This is what we encourage. And if not, like Carl said, or Jeff, we're going to have to submit you through testing, and we can help you find a location. But for example, I do care, I know we all care. I do care for our wonderful staff, and I know, and Alma can tell you, and Lauren, that we will have for the Art Bank panel, there will be artists dropping pieces at the commission so we can come and see them in, you know, whatever the best protocol possible. But those people are going to be interacting temporarily, however you want to call it, and, and nobody lives in an island and not in this city. And I do understand and respect religious, uh, beliefs or beliefs that people have. So for not vaccinating, but in this case, we are exposing our own staff and ourselves at whatever some artists that did not want to get vaccinated in the brief moment, unless the artist just dropped at the front desk, clean, and then the staff handled it, and then it goes the same way in the derat. That's one of my concerns.
But I think that reflects this conversation. You're not saying anything different than what we said. So why don't we let Carl and Jeff make a stab at language that reflects all of that and therefore does not exclude that rare case where an artist is in his or her studio and doesn't interact with anyone, and therefore it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be punitive, this approach here. So with that, if there are no other objections, I'll close out that discussion, and we'll move on to the finance update. Our treasurer, Cece, and Brian is our resource allocation officer. Cece?
Good evening. So to follow up on the conversation earlier about getting the committee together, I sent out an email, and I've heard back from a couple of people. So for the current members of the finance committee and anyone else who wants to join, please let me know. The plan is to meet prior to the September meeting, and Brian will give a brief report. But just wanted to follow up with that previous email so we can solidify the committee and sort of, you know, vote on a treasurer if that's the direction that the committee wants to go in and, you know, just have our new committee set for, for the next meeting. So I'm going to hand it over to Brian right now, and thank you.
Thank you, Cece. Good evening, everyone. With a brief update, just if, Patrick, if you would put the budget report up, please. I'm not sure if that's large enough. Someone can talk. Now, the first report was fine. Yes, sir. Okay. And as you all know, we're in the eleventh month of a twelve-month cycle, and we're at the point where we're still giving out grants. So the largest, the lion's share of the funding that's available at the current time is in our grants line, which is the subsidies and transfers. As you all may also know, we're in the process of giving out the enhancement awards or the rent and relief fund grants as well. So we have approximately a little over three hundred grants that we're still giving out or that we're still processing at the time. So we're looking to make a sizable dent in the amount of available funding. Are there any questions regarding the budget report?
Yeah, I have one. Brian, it, have we, do we know that any grants or from subsidies and transfers, any money from the fifty line will be coming back to us because a grantee can't meet their obligation or they can't accept the grant for some reason? Do we know that any money's coming back at all?
At this point, no, we don't have any, we don't anticipate any grants coming back to us. David probably would be able to speak more in terms of what's left that has not been awarded. But at this point, we're, like I said, we're moving forward with all of the enhancement grants. Majority, I would say ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the initial grants have already been awarded and are out. The second payment or the additional payments after the initial payment have, are in process now. So if I can, at this point, also make a plea to everyone that's under the sound of this meeting. If you have invoices that you're looking to submit, please, sooner rather than later. September is a crunch period for us. And while we're also processing the enhancement grants, we want to make a clear path that we can get people or get money to people as quickly as possible. So please, by all means, if you've satisfied all prerequisites, submit your invoices.
We just have David answer the question if he, if he has an answer.
Sure, of course, of course, Rona. No one has a circle back to us to let us know that they are planning on returning funds to us. We're trying, we understand that this year is, you know, there's still sort of the fallout of. We're trying, we understand that this year is, you know, there's still sort of the fallout of the pandemic. And so we're trying to be flexible. We're finding with some of our facilities and buildings grants that the availability of materials has been scarce. So we're being, you know, we're aware of that. And we are issuing no cost extensions to folks who need them in order to finish their projects. But nobody has come back to us yet to say that they were planning on returning funds.
Thank you.
So I had a question about the rent relief, about how many organizations are, were awarded? I'm just curious.
Are we talking about the initial organizations or enhancements?
I guess both. I'm just wondering how many.
Sure, I can, I can answer that, Natalie. The numbers are printed on my brain. And we issued 80 awards, eight zero, rent and relief awards. And then we are in the enhancements to, you know, our other project-based grants and GOS. In all, there were about 200 of those organizational enhancements. And we just announced the awards for the relief and recovery grant for individuals. And we are funding 96% of those individuals who applied. And each person is receiving a grant of $5,500.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, the enhancement is, what is that again?
So the issued enhanced enhancements to existing organizational awards. And there were about 200 of them. We signed off on that, I think it was the April or May commission meeting. And we tried to apply an equity lens to that. So it was a percentage of organizations' original awards. With the smallest organizations receiving 55% of their original award. And the largest organizations receiving 15% of their original awards.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Patrick, if you can go to the second report.
I have a quick question. Sorry, this is funny. I see, hey, I see some negative numbers. Can you go into that a little bit more for the FY available balance for gross pay?
Yes. So when the budget is actually done, it's done in different classifications. Individuals can be career service employees, some are term or temporary employees. So when we initially budget the positions, we generally budget them in the line that says 0011, which is regular pay or continue full-time. There were a couple of temporary employees, which would normally go under line 12, which says regular pay other. And then additional gross pay would be a line where if an employee separates from the organization, any leave that they have due to them, which in the form of annual leave, would be paid to them. So, and then finally, of course, there's fringes, but there's no negative there, and overtime pay. We generally do not budget for overtime because I believe the overall theme here is that we can get it done in the time that's allotted during the day. Did I answer the question or did you want me to go further?
No, that's fine. I don't know if anybody else has a follow-up, but that was good for me. Thank you.
Okay.
See you, Brian.
Okay. And so the second report is basically a synopsis showing you by grant program, the funding that we had anticipated to give out, what we've given out in purchase orders to date. And then some of the amounts is actually increasing due to the enhancements.
And can you make that one a little bigger? Patrick, thank you.
Are there any questions that anyone has? No? Well, that concludes my segment of this meeting. If there's nothing else, I'll just continue and sit here and listen.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you. I just want to pause here because I see we had some other people to arrive after the roll call. So I think Kimber's here now, Jose is here. Well, the two people that I don't see are Mary Ann and Mariah. Is that correct?
I don't see them either.
But I see everyone else. So thank you for that. We're going to move on to what I think is the topic of the hour, which is our grants, which is what we're here to do. And before Gretchen starts with the grants committee report, Jim, David, I just want to preface it by saying, based on our new strategic plan, which emphasizes the commission as a leader in ensuring all DC residents benefit fully from the transformative power of the arts and humanities. We have pivoted this year's grants towards increased funding for smaller organizations to provide more capacity building and sustainability assistance for artists and arts organizations, and proactive engagement and communication with the broader arts and humanities community. Overhauling the grant-making approach to shift more general operating funding opportunities for smaller organizations and affecting a better leveling of the playing field for gaining financial support was our goal. You will see this already evident in this year's general operating grant awards. We're also looking towards being more innovative in facilitating space and housing, healthcare, senior staff positions, sustainability training, et cetera, for artists and arts organizations and humanists, and more aggressive diversification of panels enabled by the new ability to pay our panelists. So I just wanted to remind us that what you hear from Gretchen is already beginning to implement and execute one of the key pillars in our going-forward collective agenda. So I just wanted to do that, not to steal any thunder from you, Gretchen, but I'll turn the microphone to you now.
I like that kind of thunder. Hello, everyone. Can we put up the first page of the word document of the grants committee report? Okay, sorry, second page. Great, okay. We'll have to scroll down. I'm going to read it just in case anyone has an issue looking at it. The Grants Committee has met several times over the last three weeks. And we have crunch numbers. We've done everything from use calculators to almost like rules. But we've gotten through it and it's taken a lot of effort and a lot of detail, but we think we're there. So we're talking about the General Operating Support Grant. And generally, there were 139 applications, 136 of those were actually paneled. Excuse me, and there were nine service organizations. The service organizations are those organizations that don't actually provide the product, but support the arts and humanities organization. In terms of the grant program description, GOS offers general operating support to nonprofit arts, humanities, and arts education organizations whose primary mission focus is in one or more of the following areas: dance, design, folk and traditional arts, fiction and nonfiction writing, media arts, music theater, or visual arts. The mission as submitted on the organization's most recent IRS Form 990 must include the words art, humanities, and/or humanities discipline. More than 51% of both the organization's previous year's cash expenses and programming services must be devoted to the arts and humanities and/or arts education. The Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Support Act of 2021, recently passed by the council, entirely removes the National Capital Arts Cohort, NACOC, from CAH's Establishment Statutes and restructures the agency's annual budget to allocate 54% of the grant's budget to general operating support grants. Awards are to be competitive with applications reviewed in cohorts of similar budget size and with grant award amounts tiered in relation to the grantee's budget size. Many of you probably know or have been asking or have been asked why there's been no correspondence from us regarding these grants and what the amount would be. Well, this would have been done perhaps a month or two ago. But there was a note sent out by David and the staff telling people that we were waiting for this particular action by the council so that we could reconfigure the numbers. GOS saw an increase from 131 to 148 applicants from FY '21 to '22. The people that participated in coming up with the recommendations that we're going to propose were the staff, Heron Sagabraham, David, Marky, Jeff Scott. Our committee was Stacy Lee Banks, Mariah Hall Rooney, Derek Younger, Cora Masters Barry. Ex officio members attending were Alma Gates, Quanise Floyd, and Cece Sartor last morning. And of course, our chair, Reggie Van Lee, was a part of this committee. Okay, the considerations that we had to discuss in a lot of length were, do we fund all applicants? We talked about the fact that even though the quote-unquote pandemic is over, we are still coming out of it and we're still having to deal with the Delta variant. And we're really not sure what the future's going to be, even for the next months or two, much less the next year. So our decision was to fund all eligible applicants for FY '22 GOS cycle. The next page. Okay, soft landings. One of the goals of GOS is to provide stability of funding from year to year. In the past, we've implemented a soft landing, partial award to organizations that have been GOS recipients in the past to avoid them from dropping out of funding range altogether. This was not applicable this year because we made the decision to fund all eligible applicants. Next, the DC-based arts and humanities budget versus total organizational budget. There are a few organizations, a few recipients rather, that are not arts and humanities organizations, but who have substantial arts programs. For FY '22, we asked a nuanced budget question to determine how much of an organization's total cash expenses were dedicated to the arts and humanities in DC. We asked and discussed, do we determine funding levels based on the organization's DC-based arts and humanities budget? Yes, we do. Do we determine funding levels based on an organization's arts and humanities budget? Not applicable because of the first one. And the third, do we determine funding levels based on total organizational cash expenses? Again, not applicable because we determine the funding levels based on the organization's DC-based, and I keep emphasizing that, DC-based arts and humanities budget. Under proposed budget cohorts, if we scroll up a little bit. Okay, do the nine budget cohorts work as funding cohorts? We discussed this at length. And yes, it's our recommendation that we use these nine budget cohorts as funding cohorts. Do the ranges of funding work for each budget cohort? And when you see the next page, you will see, yes. We have talked about the ranges, we've calculated, we've done everything we could. David has slept with this document for I don't know how many weeks now. But yes, we decided, yes. Do we cap the total award amount based on a percent of an organization's budget? We previously funded no more than 30 to 35% in GOS. So our recommendation was no, we do not cap the total award based on a percent of an organization's budget. The next page is the funding approach. Here we go. Our funding approach was a plus or minus variance determined between each organization's ranking in the FY '21 and '22 to indicate whether an organization did better or worse between those two years. Our proposed range of funding was determined for each organizational budget group. Organizations with budgets between $400,000 to $738,000 could expect an award size ranging between $120,000 and $140,000. To determine each award, we use the midpoint of the range. In the case of an organization with a budget of between $400,000 and $738,000, that midpoint would be $130,000. And then use the plus or minus variance to determine that final award. Now, I'm going to read the recommendation but not propose it. So keep that in the back of your mind as we go to the next sheet. The proposal is that the commission agree to the proposed funding structure and award amounts by cohort for all 145 eligible applications to the Fiscal Year 2022 General Operating Support Grants Program for a combined total funding amount of $16,455,000. Can we go to the slide that says FY '21 to '22 GOS comparisons? August the 12th, it's a legal document that we've got a blow up for everybody to see. Or either hit that plus mark on the left. Can we get it larger? Whoa. Okay, not sure we can see it all. What you'll see on here are the nine cohorts. And I want you to reflect on what the chairman has just read in terms of the direction. And we're taking in all the considerations that we have discussed over the past, really, six months. And we see the nine cohorts with the number of organizations in each cohort, the average organizational size, the band range, the average FY '22 award, the average award as a percent of the average organizational budget, the total cohort award for 2022 that's proposed. The next column in Louis Green is the FY '21 GOS NACOC amount, the average GOS award for NACOC in '21, and the FY '21 to '22 average NACOC award. That was important because again, the whole reason that we ended up having to wait so long for this was to have the council approve the changes in the NACOC legislation. And as you can see in that last green column, the differences that we're working with here. And the last two columns, FY '21 average GOS award for non-NACOC goes down by listing by cohorts, one through nine. And the FY '21 to '22 average, and for non-NACOC, would be those numbers that are reflected. And I hope those of you who have looked at this so many times can see that we have actually done one of the things that the task force recommended, which was to increase the percentages in the smaller cohorts. So if we go, are there any questions? This is a lot to take in, I know.
I was going to say, we should see if there are any questions at this point.
Gretchen, this is Cece. I have just a clarification point. I might have misheard, but just a quick question. So there was the recommendation about capping the percentage of GOS funding to an organization. And you said something about previously, we capped it 30%. And then I believe you said yes. So does that mean we will still only fund GOS up to 30%? Or that we no longer have the limit and we can fund up to however much the staff recommends? I guess that was the only part I was a little bit confused about.
Okay, I'm trying to remember, was that on the previous document?
The answer is we don't have any caps.
Well, yeah, true. That is the answer.
That's it. So we decided that we would not sit in judgment over whether an organization has the capacity to consume the money, but rather give the money we feel they deserve. And that's, there are no caps this year as there were in last year.
Just to expand on that a bit, one of the things that we talked about also was capacity building. We talked about giving money to organizations that were smaller. And we also talked about, the question came up, well, what if that organization doesn't know what to do with that money? Well, we're going to help them out. Like Reggie said in the beginning, we're going to teach them how to fish. We are going to work with a capacity building. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so if we decide that we want to just, you know, for argument's sake, support an organization to 100% of their budget, we have the, we have the ability to do that? I'm using 100% as an extreme, but you know, just as an example.
No. If we look at the averages, are we on the right sheet here? I have to take the glasses off to look at the screen here. For instance, let's look at cohort number, number one. The average organizational size budget was $67,000. The band range that we're looking at is $40,000 to $60,000. So our average award would be in the middle there, $50,000. So we'd have to still go down these 23 organizations to assign specific dollars.
But I think to Cece's point, it is possible that in that first cohort, you would have an organization with a $50,000 budget and we would give them $50,000 award. That is possible.
It's possible, it's possible, but.
But we try to be careful that we don't overfeed anybody unnecessarily. But there's no rule that says we cap at all.
That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question, uh, Gretchen?
Yeah.
So I'm curious, did we, are we doing better on the demographics in terms of the, the distribution of monies by ward? Which doesn't show on this chart, I know. But I'm curious, by expanding funding to smaller organizations, if we've been more inclusive in terms of those we're reaching outside of the traditional wards that have historically been reached?
Uh, the quick answer is yes. I can have David expand on this. Um, because most, many of the organizations we weren't able to reach were those that had smaller budgets.
That's great.
Smaller organizational budget. So as you can see, we have increased the total amount for those smaller cohorts.
Yeah. David, did you want to say more?
Um, the, there's that, when you reference, uh, you know, wards or organizations that we haven't reached, a lot of the top scores in, across the cohorts were from organizations that are, were from wards that are traditionally seen as being marginalized. Um, so, and there's a pretty good distribution, so.
That's great. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Gretchen, I was gonna say, because this is important, I'm gonna do a Reggie-ism here. And to actually go around and see if people are comfortable with what we have here or not. So I'm gonna do my roll call. Stacy?
Yes, of course. I, um, voted for all of this. I think it's, it's a wonderful, what do we call it, leveling the playing field, so.
Good. Cora? Cora?
I had it on mute. Yeah, I, I have questions, but it's okay. It's fine.
I'll take that as a victory. Maggie?
Yes, thank you.
Quanise?
Yes.
Rona?
And I have a question for Gretchen. Um, so what you're saying Gretchen is, these are by cohorts from budgets of eight thousand up to ten point five plus million. And then at some point, after we vote on the cohort money expenditures, you're gonna go out and, and parcel, and parcel it out to individual organizations?
Correct. What we're voting on is the cohort.
Right, okay. And then the individual organizations come later. And then do we vote on that again, or is that just decided by the grants committee?
Um, heretofore, it has been, once this particular piece is resolved or voted on in terms of the cohort, it has been decided before with the grants committee and the staff. But it's certainly up to the chair to decide which way we want to do it now.
Okay.
Rona, do you have a point of view there?
Yes, I would like to see a little more data, um, which would go to address Cece's point as well about what we're doing with some of the organizations that in, in, that were in the COC and some of the smaller organizations that were excluded from funding. I think that would help us understand how our money's being spent.
Yeah, we can do that, I think. And I think everybody would like to see that. So I would certainly support that. And I absolutely think you'll be pleased at the way this is gonna work out.
I think this transparency and full disclosure is important. So thank you for bringing that, Rona, and thank you Gretchen for agreeing. I agree as well. I'm sorry, Cora.
Uh, I have missed it, uh, but I didn't, I hear, I heard your criteria for the grants. Did you say anything in there about their equity plan or status? Or is that for the next round?
I did not address it this time because we added it to the applications for FY22. So we will have to look at this in real detail within six, in, in a year's period of time to see if there's any progress to it. These didn't have that demographic document at the front end when, when they were issued. But we have it now.
So my only caveat to that is, I only sat in one, uh, panel for half a day. But questions around equity lenses were clearly a port of the conversation that the panelists had in those grants. We have to be more explicit in next year when we have time to do it. But I think this notion seeped into the conversation, at least of the panel that I was on, as I hear some of others as well. So we'll do what we can, uh, this year, but we need to be more explicit about it next year.
Yes.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue down my roll call. Alma?
Yes.
Natalie? Great. Natalie?
Yes.
Kimber?
She just put something in the chat.
She said she has a challenging connection, but she's in support.
Oh, great, thanks. Uh, Mary Ann and Mariah are not here. Cece, is Cece still with us?
Yes, I'm here. Um, yes, I just wanna, uh, co-sign what Mrs. Barry and Rona were saying about wanting more data, but in, in the spirit, I, yes, I, uh, I support this.
Good. Carla?
I agree. I would like to see the additional data, but on the surface, this looks fine.
Hector?
I, I agree with it. However, I think that it also requires a commitment to sustainability. Because any change that you're going to make in any organization in terms of the ability to fish for themselves is a transitional period and it doesn't happen overnight. And I am concerned that this year they may have the funding, but what about next year when they're truly going to need it in order to continue? So the sustainability factor, I think, is gonna be very critical, in my opinion.
I agree. And that, that's a commitment I offered in the going forward agenda, that we've got to help even beyond the dollars.
Right.
Help the whole problem there.
Right, because this reflects additional monies that we received.
Yeah.
Correctly, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
But the, the, the question still remains, are, are we going to be receiving this money or this quantity of money to be able to do this on an annual or a regular basis to help sustain these organizations? Uh, sometimes you have manna from heaven, but not always. It doesn't rain that well every year.
Agreed.
I, I, I just wanted to add that, um, I, I really agree with that point. Um, and so, you know, I know my friends in philanthropy, they talk about moving to models where you're doing multi-year grant funding. So, but this is all things that we can talk about in the future.
Yes.
And I would encourage you all to keep us honest on this point. This is very, very important. And you know, Rome wasn't made in a day and all that stuff. We can't do everything, uh, but keep us honest so that we keep pushing on this. This, this is what we're here to do. We're here to grow and sustain the arts and humanities ecosystem in this nation and, you know, helping somebody one year and then leaving them dry in other areas is not.
It is, by the way, I understand that there is going to be some kind of report provided where there is, what I would like to see perhaps is those organizations that we made that very strong effort at supporting them to, to make sure that equity is represented very well and to help these organizations. So we can see over a matter of years, so that it's not a matter of a one-year exercise or a two-year. This is gonna be sustained over a period of years because we want these organizations to grow. And in many respects, I think as an organization, we want to be in a position to say, we have done our job. And we see over time how these organizations have grown and have been able to be sustained by this organization. That, it, it will set us apart and, and it really would make a, a quantum leap into what this whole equity issue is and what we need to do.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Music to my ears.
Yeah, absolutely.
Jose?
Yes, hello. I support it and I agree with what you said, Reggie. Because I have been in a couple of meetings and the, and even the panelists who are in different organizations do rea, do realize that we're at the beginnings of this and they had questions and how to improve. So I think as we go through this and I stay through my entire panel, which was fascinating because it's amazing how passionate, knowledgeable these people are. Mine was about festivals and, and special events. So we need to, uh, teach people people what we're looking for. And I, I think it was what it would be, uh, what is the word I want to use? It, it was, it's a start. I mean, this is not the year that we can ask all the question, but this is a, it's step in the right direction. So I do support it wholly. Thank you.
Gretchen?
Yes, I support it.
Derek? Is Derek with us?
I am, and as a member of the grants committee, I'm feel well informed and I'm happy about the introduction forward into, uh, growing our grantees.
Good, good. And of course, I'm in full support. I thought it was important that we hear from every commissioner.
Yeah, and I, I just wanna say, as we move forward working through this and working not only through this GOS grant, but all the other grants, many of you talk to many other organizations, many other people. So we really need your input, advice, suggestions, um, for the approach that needs to happen.
Good.
Can we go back to the other page? This is what the, um, resolution is that would require our vote. Um, being resolved that the commission agreed to the proposed funding structure and award amounts by cohort for all one hundred forty-five eligible applications to the fiscal year 2022 General Operating Support Grants Program for a combined total funding of sixteen million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, as we presented.
So do I take a motion to approve, or do we have any questions or conversation? I, I tried to do that in talking to each of you individually, but any other conversation, otherwise I'll take a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. With the revisal that we now will come back in the next meeting with the next level of detail and all the data so that we can confirm that what we're doing well at this level binds itself also down to the next level.
Absolutely.
Good. Anything else in the grants committee?
No, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any new business to discuss?
Hi, this is Quanise. Did, um, I'm glad we are going from the grants committee to this new business because I, I found, um, what was spoken about during the public comment period to be really interesting and fascinating. And so I'm wondering if there are any, um, policies or programs in pay, place for procedures in regards to objections towards grantees? Or is there like an ethics clause? Like what, what is in place when things like that come up for us?
So I have to defer to Jeff or Carl. Um, I know that if we wanted to take this into new business, I have a whole set of procedures of how we vote on going into it and we have to have a closed session, et cetera. But I think your question is above that, Quanise, which is, you know, when one gets to this sort of situation, how do you think about it? So Carl or Jeff, do you have any advice here for us?
Uh, yes, thank you, Reggie. Um, Jeff, David, uh, and Lauren, uh, Glove and I actually, um, we, we had a, a pretty in-depth, uh, discussion about this, this matter this afternoon. Uh, and then even more in, uh, background, uh, underlying factual information was shared by the, the public commenters. In, in light of, uh, in light of the fact that, you know, we just collected this new information from the, well, at least I, let me speak for myself. I, uh, for the first time, hearing some of the, uh, the details regarding this project from the today's commenters. Um, yeah, my, I, I think the best approach would be for, uh, for the commission to allow the same group of, uh, the senior managers to take this back, take the information that we received tonight and then to ha, and then to continue this conversation tomorrow or, or this week. And then make a recommendation or, or some type of report to you all collectively, uh, wherein we can not only lay out the, the, uh, in writing, the underlying, uh, factual foundations, but, but, uh, also explain the differences in public reporting, uh, when you've got certain types of grant, uh, uh, grant programs involved. Cause Lauren was explaining that to us this afternoon and it was really helpful. So in a nutshell, I mean, I, what I'd like to propose is if you could just give, give us a, a few days the staff to, to get back together, take the information that we got today, along with the information that Lauren had shared with us, uh, earlier today, and then let us report back out to you, um, you know, when we can really fully vet this and, and give a, a, a detailed and, and clear, uh, more clear presentation, I respectfully suggest.
Quanise? This is Cece. I just have a follow-up, um, and a, maybe a request if people think it's appropriate. So, uh, in all my years, I've never seen this, but I know I haven't been on the commission as long as some others. So if there's past precedents or if there's, uh, you know, um, if this has happened before, I think it would just be helpful to know, like, if this has occurred before and what the steps were taken at that time, if, if it's ever happened. But it feels very unprecedented, so I just wanna make sure we're being thoughtful about.
And thank you for, for, you know, for your comments. From my understanding, and I've only been at the commission for six years, I haven't seen anything like it. Although I've seen, I, I've seen and been involved in historical preservation issues when I worked at, uh, another agency. But I haven't seen it here, uh, from my, my understanding.
I, I asked that question and to no one's knowledge that currently exists in this space, as has ever happened before. So I, I appreciate Call's recommendation, which I think is the thoughtful way to approach it. But also for us to take these public comments very seriously. To not give them short shrift, to give them the attention that they deserve, following the procedures and the protocols, et cetera. So I think to have, Call, you and your colleagues, to get together and come back to us and treat this in a serious way, I think is important.
And just to clarify, we're, when we say unprecedented, what I specifically mean is I've never seen, um, a public comment period where someone came before us to ask us to halt an application. That's what I mean. So I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page about what's unprecedented.
Well, thank you, because that's what I was wondering when everyone kept saying they'd never seen it before. And I was like, never seen what before? So thank you for clarifying that, Cece.
Yeah, and thank you, Cece. No, that, that, that's what I, that was what my comments regarding. I had, I've never seen, uh, anyone, uh, come to one of our public meetings and, and to challenge directly uh, uh, an individual grant application. So we're, we're talking about the same thing.
So, I'm sorry, I would ask you, when you come back to us, not only with your recommendation, having looked through it, but how do we handle a situation like this? Does it come to the September meeting? Is it part of the public meeting? Do we have a closed meeting? I, I'm just not sure where this conversation needs to happen, but if you could give us some guidance there as well. I'm sorry, I cut someone off.
Yeah, um, Reg, I have been in the years and I've heard, sorry. I have never seen something like this be done at a meeting where somebody came. But I agree with you that we need to have the consideration and find out whatever we can do. Um, and then talk to whoever, ethics or whatever group, Carl. Cause I've never heard of somebody coming to complain about a, and a proposal for a project yet.
I'm, I'm not sure, excuse me, I'm not sure if Mr. Walton, Ms. Ragland, Dr. Walton, or Ms. West are still on the call, but I want them to know that we are taking this with great seriousness. And we're gonna figure out the right process to make sure this is treated in the white way. Whatever you're, with great seriousness. I'm sorry, Cora, you gonna say something?
No, I, I think it was Alma.
I'm sorry, Alma, I'm sorry.
I think it's also very important for us to keep in mind that there seem to be two issues in play here. One is the historic preservation issue, which is not within our purview. And the other is the actual grant application. So, um, I, I just wanted to say that.
Yep, that's an important clarification. So Carl, you and your colleagues, please take that into, so this is a complicated, complex set of issues. But I think we have to address them with seriousness.
And I'm just first year expertise and how we do. This is Quanise. I just have one final thing to say. I also think, like, yes, we're gonna think about this in the process and operationalizing it. But I know we've all been talking about the commission serving as a hub. And so when issues like this come up again, we have to think, like, are we somebody as a mediator? What do we do, like, besides the, the technical procedural stuff? What are we doing to try to heal this type of work? So I just wanted to put that out there as well.
I agree. So your point is, though we may deal with this one incident, we need to put a policy in place so that we could deal with this again. We don't, we hope it doesn't happen, but we're prepared to deal with this on an ongoing basis.
And this is, I, I just have one more, um, follow-up. Maybe this is a David question. So I'm assuming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that this is an application that's currently being, um, concerned. So is, I.
Cece, we can't discuss.
Oh, okay. Well, okay, so non, just generally, I know that we are in the middle of panel season. So I just wanna be mindful of like what the real world implication of that means. Like if this is part of a panel, and I'm not asking for confirmation, but just assuming we know that we're in the middle of panel season and this is an actual application that this is. Yeah, so this is gonna have implications.
If I may interrupt, if I let, let's let Carl and his colleagues go away in short. If I may interrupt, if I, let, let Carl and his colleagues go away in short order and sort through this. I don't think it's appropriate for us to discuss the details, the specifics, in this way, because we promised we will come back with the right approach to it.
I have one thing, Reggie, I'd like to add. Carl, when you do this, can you make sure when you present to us, we hear both sides? I've heard today from some community members, but I'd like to hear the grantees side as well.
But, Rona, thank you. That's a, that's a very good comment. Thank you.
Good. Any other conversation? I think this was a robust meeting, and they were finishing just on time, so thank you for that. The next regular meeting of the commission will be Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021, at 5:30 PM. I thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.